So it's not here yet.
We're in a public hearing. Do we have one before they discuss the topic or after?
It's always after.
After a public comment.
Yeah, you gabble for opening.
And then after a public comment.
And then gabble out.
Okay.
If there's any public comment.
Figured. All right, it is Tuesday, November 15th, 1:00 P.M. This is time for our regularly scheduled city commission meeting. Mr. Clerk, do we have a form?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, it is time for, I think Commissioner Ortiz, it's Commissioner Ortiz, for doing a pledge of allegiance to the flag and invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Keep that with me. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for today. We thank you for the moisture that we've gotten. We just ask that you send more in any kind of form you wish, Lord. We give thanks to anything that you provide us. Lord, today I just come to you with asking for guidance for our government officials in office, Lord, and in our state office and in our city local offices too, Lord. As Thanksgiving approaches, Lord, we just ask that you bless us with those relationships, family, friends, loved ones, near and far, Lord, be with us all. It's in Jesus's name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Okay, next up is approval of the minutes. Was there any changes that we need to make to the minutes?
I don't see any.
Bill Stan is approved. All right, sounds good. Next, we have public comment. This is time for anybody who has something that is not on the agenda to come up and discuss it. We have 30 minutes allotted, five minutes per person. I'm pleased if you do come up, please state your name. I'm going to say that I don't have anything for Match Day that I know of. So if we have something, if we have somebody from Match Day from the public.
Connie's not here. Usually that's the one that walks.
So maybe it's Pam then.
No.
She was locked in.
That's surprised, that's surprised we're walking like the last one.
Okay, anybody want to say anything really quick?
Connie should be here any minute if we're waiting. She left at the same time I did, so she like literally should be walking in.
I'll stretch this out for one more minute then.
We can move on.
Okay, if she comes back in. Okay, that's good. Yep.
That was a request that was made. If you'd like me to go to item, item seven, Mayor?
Yes, please.
These are staff reports, A through D, or A through C, and D is a letter from Cox Communications, and that's pursuant to what they're required to submit to us under their franchise agreement. Do you have any questions on the staff reports?
I just wanted to say incredible numbers at the airport. And then I didn't know, have they, have they brought the larger plane in? Or is that, has that started yet for, with additional seating?
It starts at the first of December.
First of December.
They're bringing it in at the end of this month. Rochelle can tell us more about it though.
Well, I mean, I know a lot of people are excited because I know a lot of people, they're surprising how far out they have to make reservations because, I mean, the planes are full. So if you, you're expecting last minute, it's not going to happen anymore.
Yes, that is correct. So we do have another record-breaking year. Like you said, the employments are amazing, so we're very thankful for everybody who's flying GCK. And the afternoon of November 30th is when the larger aircraft come in. So it's a CRJ-700 with 65 seats rather than our current aircraft of 50 seats. So that'll start here in a couple of weeks and continue. But yeah, ticket sales are going well. Prices are a little high just because the flights are so full. So if you haven't made your travel plans for the holidays, we encourage you to do it right away.
So I was going to ask also, you know, on that 65-seat plane, will it actually have Wi-Fi capability? Someone was asking me, and I said I didn't even think about it. But I know that's a big deal.
That's a good question.
Wi-Fi is a big deal for a lot of people on the, when you, when you fly down to Dallas and you go on a bigger plane.
Sure.
They always have with the Wi-Fi and all of that. So I didn't know if this one had that or not.
That's a great question. I honestly don't know the answer to that. There will be a first class, I do know that.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, if you're used to first-class luxury, you can fly from Garden City to Dallas and that. But I'm not for sure on the Wi-Fi. I would assume not because typically those are on the longer, the larger aircraft and longer halls. So my assumption would be no, it wouldn't have the Wi-Fi capabilities.
Okay, thank you.
Awesome, thanks. And we can probably skip back to item five, public comment, since Connie is here.
All right. Walk in, sit down, take a breath, take a breath.
If you, we will do a public comment about Match Day. If you want to talk about Match Day and then we'll tie up some loose ends if we need to tie up some loose ends and.
Thank you for the opportunity. Yeah, Match Day is kicking off today, November 15th. We are starting a two-week period of community giving that culminates on November 29th, Giving Tuesday. And on that day, we have an in-person event that supports the local nonprofits at the old Gordmans Building here in downtown Garden City on Main Street. And we hope that all the participating nonprofits will be there to showcase their work, to talk about their important mission, and talk to donors who want to support them financially and maybe also learn more about volunteer opportunities. Because we always want to stress, this is not just about giving money. This is also about showing support and, and see what you can do as a volunteer and as, in many other ways to support the important work of our local nonprofits. So we have 46 participating agencies this year. That is seven more than last year. Each year, Match Day is growing, and the Community Foundation provides $100,000 in matching funds. That's great. That will be distributed proportionate to the total amount that's raised. So last year's event generated over $650,000. In total, since we started doing this since 2017, we raised over $2 million for the local nonprofits. So it's pretty, pretty successful. A lot of community foundations around the country do this, typically on Giving Tuesday. But our foundation is a little different in that we only allow endowed nonprofits to participate. So they have to have a fund with the Community Foundation, and our matching dollars go back into that fund. And that will, you know, provide for long-term needs. Whereas the other gifts that they receive during the campaign will be theirs to keep. And that can be used for anything they want or need. They don't have to report back on it. So with this whole giving campaign, we hope to address the immediate needs that the nonprofits always have and the long-term needs. So online giving is also a new thing since COVID. And it's really successful because last year we had 18 states from around the country participating in online giving. So we're assuming people who moved away from Garden City perhaps, who are still connected to the community. They want to support nonprofits. But most of the gifts come in in person. And that happens especially, of course, on the in-person, at the in-person event on the 29th. There will be also a parallel community event in Leona, in Wichita County, where we have an affiliate office. So nine funds from Leona will also be participating. So yeah, it's, it's fun. It's also a fun event. I want to stress that each year you see that how the, how the organizations collaborate and partner to really support the work that they all do here in this community. And that is not a small feat. What would Garden City look like, right, without the library and the YMCA and the United Way and all the important agencies? So we're really excited about this opportunity and thankful for the donors and the sponsors who have helped us to raise the $100,000 for the match pool. Because that is something that we fundraised for, and that comes from our founding members and our donors who really see the importance of endowment giving also, the long-term giving. So I want to stress again how grateful we are for this opportunity and we hope for a good event. And thank you for making this Match Day proclamation.
Connie, am I correct that the, your request is to proclaim November 29th as Match Day in Garden City? Okay, I think the governing body can consider and approve if you're comfortable doing that with language that resembles the language in the proclamation from last year. Proclaiming November 29th as Match Day in Garden City. And then we can do the picture opportunity, and then we'll make sure Connie gets a copy of the proclamation once it's been drafted and signed.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion we approve the proclamation to proclaim November 29th as Match Day in Garden City.
Second. There's a motion, second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That passes, and we'll go and get a picture.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Big smiles on three. One, two, three. Maybe not. Nope, there it goes. Yeah, looks good.
All right, we've got some items on the, items on the meetings of note. A lot of things coming up. Those require RSVPs. Please do those through C-Len or coordinate them through C-Len at least. I think we're ready for the appropriation ordinance, with which, if approved, would be ordinance number 2567-2022A.
Item A. I'll make the motion to approve appropriation ordinance number 2567-2022A.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That passes.
Item 10A is a public hearing, so if you want to skip forward, we can take on item B. The governing body is asked to consider and approve an ordinance regarding the city's retail electric rates. And if approved, it would be ordinance number 2941-2022. Mike?
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. Excuse me. At your last meeting, November 1st, 2022, the city commission, at the city commission meeting, the governing body directed staff to prepare an ordinance that would change the current electric retail rates charged in the city of Garden City. And if approved today by the governing body, the following rate changes would go into effect on the dates indicated. The kilowatt-hour charge across all classes will increase 4.8% effective January 1, 2023, and by an additional 2.5% increases effective January 1 of '24, January 1 of '25, and January 1 of 2026. Monthly customer charges will increase by $3 for the residential rate class and by $5 for both the small commercial rate class and the large commercial rate class. And for clarity, I just want to make sure that that's a one-time increase in that charge, and that would be January 1 of 2023. Your alternatives would be to approve the ordinance, changing the electric kilowatt-hour charges across all classes by 4.8% effective January 1, 2023, and an additional 2.5% increase effective January 1, 2024, January 1, 2025, and January 1 of 2026, as well as an increase in the one-time monthly service charge of $3 for residential rate class. And the monthly customer charge would increase by $5 for both the small commercial rate class and the large commercial rate class. The other option is do not approve the ordinance. Staff recommends alternative one. Should the governing body choose alternative one and changing the current electric retail rates, it's projected that the electric fund balance would be restored to the recommended $12.5 million balance in 2027. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Mike? I make a motion we approve ordinance number 2941-2022.
Second.
There's a motion, a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That passes.
Thank you.
Thanks for all your work on that. That's a lot of work getting that already. Yep.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Item C. The governing body is asked to consider and approve an ordinance to annex real property located on North Jenny Barker Road and be made a part of the city of Garden City, Kansas. If approved, this would be ordinance number 2942-2022. 2022. Mike?
Mayor and Commissioners. Lucky Four Investments, ALLC, is the property owner of approximately 115 acres located on North Jenny Barker Road and has requested in a letter dated October 26, 2022, to be annexed into the city of Garden City, Kansas. The request to annex also asks to receive all city utilities, including water, wastewater, electricity, and solid waste. The property is currently zoned A, agricultural district, and is now used as farm ground with no structures on the property except for an irrigation water well. If the governing body chooses to pass this ordinance, the annexation hearing is made pursuant to KSA 12-520A7, and no resolution notice or public hearing is required pursuant to that KSA 12-520AF. If approved today, this ordinance shall be in full force and effect from and after November 22nd and following its publication in the Garden City Telegram, the city's official newspaper. This property is located within the certified territory of the Weathon Electric Cooperative. Therefore, should the governing body move forward with this annexation, there is a process defined in state statutes on how the electric provider would be selected to serve this property. That process would be guided by the city attorney's office and would be returned later to the governing body at a subsequent meeting. Alternatives would be to approve the ordinance, annexing the land to the city of Garden City. The other alternative is to not approve the ordinance. Staff has no recommendation. There are currently no financial impacts to the city of Garden City by annexing this property into the city. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
So my only question is, as far as, so when they're determining who's going to serve as electric provider, will that be done fairly quickly or will it be done once structures are, are begin in place?
It'll be done quickly. It'll either happen, it probably won't be at your next meeting, but within two meetings thereafter, that process would start. The first process is the, the current electric provider is asked if they want a franchise agreement with that piece of property or not. That's the first step, and then we go into the different factors.
I move that we approve ordinance number 2942-2022, an ordinance annexing the land to the city of Garden City, Kansas, pursuant to KSA 12-520A7.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That passes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item D. The governing body is asked to consider and approve an amendment to the Garden City zoning regulations adding PCD, Planned Commercial Development, as a district. Trent?
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. So before you today for consideration is adding the PCD or Planned Commercial Development to what we already have in our regulations, which is the planned unit development. And some of those differences are the, the bolt overlay districts, so the guiding district does guide the direction of the plan. And these are some additions to that that they can make. The PCD is similar to that of the PUD. It gives them, it gives the developer an opportunity to combine commercial, residential, and some light industrial into their uses. Like the PUD, the planned commercial development will have standards, requirements for the plan. The plan will be reviewed by the Planning Commission, and then they will give a recommendation to the governing body for approval. The PCD encourages mixed uses and gives developers the opportunity to create imaginative and efficient utilization of land. Developers will be given the opportunity to have reduced setbacks, parking requirements, and sign modifications within their plan. Attached in your agenda packet is the full body of the document. This did go before the Planning Commission. Planning Commission members, eight present, all eight voted in favor of this. The all terms before you today. Number one, governing body may adopt the Planning Commission's recommendation by approving the proposed ordinance. Number two, the governing body may override the Planning Commission's recommendation by two-thirds majority vote. And number three, governing body may return the recommendation to the Planning Commission with a statement specifying the basis for the governing body's failure to approve or disapprove. Staff's recommendation is alternate number one. Adopt the Planning Commission recommendation by approve, by approved the proposed, by approving the proposed ordinance. Sorry. Any questions you have for me, I'll do my best to answer them.
I really appreciated the opportunity for flexibility and innovation. I thought that was, this is a neat idea, and so, really great work.
If you approve this, it would be ordinance 2943-2022.
I move to approve ordinance number 2943-2022.
Second.
All right, there's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That passes. Thank you, Trent.
Items E, one through, looks like I, one are all nuisance resolutions. First two are environmental, last three are motor vehicle. We'll go ahead and read the background on E1. And just most of that material speaks to process, and the process is covered under all of those. So the subsequent resolutions, I'll just give you the resolution number and the address, if that's okay, the way we did it last time. All right. So item E. The governing body is asked to consider and approve an environmental nuisance resolution. And if approved, it would be resolution number 2987-2022 and abate a condition at 2009 Center Street. Trent?
Okay, so what we have on the property, we have some couches, miscellaneous cat playing equipment, and some wood lying around the property. Staff has been unable to reach the residence. We did send out two of those violations, October 7th of this year and October 19th of this year. Alternatives, number one is to approve, or alternative two is to not approve the resolution.
I'll make the motion to approve resolution number 2987-2022. Second.
All right, there's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That passes.
Item F1, which if approved would be 2988-2022, abates conditions at 917 Harold.
Okay, so this property, we have some wood and other miscellaneous.
Trent, I think they're gonna take, if they've got questions, they'll, they'll stop us, but other than that, we'll do the address and the resolution number.
Yep.
2988-2022.
I make the motion to approve resolution number 2988-2022.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That passes.
Item G, if approved, would be resolution 2989-2022 and abate conditions at 512 North 10th.
Move to approve resolution number 2989-2022.
Second.
All right, there's a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That passes.
And we're on H, correct?
Yes.
H would be resolution 2990-2022, abating conditions at 917 Harold Avenue.
I move to approve resolution number 2990-2022.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That passes.
Item I, if approved, would be resolution number 2991-2022 and abate conditions at 1602 Conklin.
Make the motion to approve resolution number 2991-2022.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Trent.
Thank you.
Item 12A, the governing body is asked to consider and reject the bid from Border States Electric of 315 KV pad mount switchgear for $281,702.8. Mike?
Yep, good afternoon again, Mayor and Commissioners. The Electric Division had designed the first phase of electrical improvements associated with the Garden City Regional Airport expansion and new terminal. As planned, this phase would require purchasing three of the 15 KV pad mount switchgear units. Bid documents and specifications were issued on October 12th, and then these bids were opened at 2:00 P.M. Central Time on November 2nd, 2022. Only one bid was received from Border States Electric for that same amount, Matt referenced, $281,702.8. This price is 150% higher than what was estimated for the cost of these units, and the delivery time is 60 weeks out. And that's just unacceptable, both the price and the, we believe it is anyway. So our recommendation to the commission would be to, alternative one would be to reject the bids due to price and delivery timeframe and direct staff to design alternatives to meet the Garden City Regional Airport's expansion needs. Or item two would be to award the bid to Border States Electric for the $281,702.8. Staff recommends alternative one, to reject the bid due to price and delivery timeframe and direct staff to design alternatives to meet the Garden City Regional Airport's expansion needs. There is no financial impact should the governing body reject this bid. And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Mike or Rochelle, this, if we find another alternative, you know, we don't do this, find another alternative. Are we fairly confident we can find one that's more than 60 weeks responsive?
Yes, what we're going to do, we've, the electric utility people have already got together, and we've redesigned that whole area. I will feed that. Everything from the, in the terminal area, the business area will still be put all underground, but we'll be replacing some of the older overhead conductor that's there rather than burying them at the present time. So the short answer is yes, Matt, we can find that alternative and be able to get that project completed.
Well, you have to go through the bid process again, Mike, when you do this, or you're, with your new design, you won't really need these anymore? Or is that what you're saying?
No, the, the pad-mounted switchgear that we bid is for, the boxes, the big green boxes are set underground for all underground facilities. We have three of the same pieces of equipment in an overhead situation, completely different piece of equipment. We will intend, we will instead of using those, we'll use the overhead equipment instead. So still have the same protection.
Yeah, I move that we reject the bid due to price and delivery timeframe and direct staff to design alternatives to meet the Garden City Regional Airport's expansion needs. I'll second.
All right, there's a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That passes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We are still two minutes out from the public hearing time.
Would you like to, for me to talk slow?
We're probably a minute and a half now.
We could do consent agenda right quick.
Yeah, we can run in the consent agenda.
And then Matt could.
Unless someone wants to pull off the, one of the two items on consent agenda, the appropriate motion would be to approve the consent agenda items 12E, E1 and 2.
I'll move, I'll make the motion to approve Consent Agenda, items 1 and 2.
Second.
All right, there's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That passes. That passes.
Should've probably read that a little slower.
You should've took at least 15 more seconds, but I think we're close enough.
It's gonna take me a while to get back up to the, all right.
And then note that Commissioner Ortiz is stepping down for this item.
Item 10A, this is our 130 public hearing. It's related to granting a tax exemption related to the proposed issuance of industrial revenue bonds for Providence Ethical Investments LLC, medical office building and related facilities. Mayor, after I read this preamble, you can open the public hearing, and at that point in time, take comment on the matter. Following the public discussion, then you can close the public hearing, and at that time, the governing body is asked to consider and approve a tax abatement resolution, which if approved, would be resolution number 2992-2022. And I'll read the background, if you want to open the public hearing.
All right, public hearing is open.
At the February 1st, 2022 city commission meeting, the commission approved a resolution of intent to issue industrial revenue bonds for Providence Ethical Investment LLC, medical office building located at 2301 East Mary. At the city commission's last meeting, the commission authorized notice of the public hearing for November 15th, 2022. After the public hearing, the governing body will be asked to consider and approve a resolution approving the property tax exemption for the project. The cost to benefit analysis shows that the project qualifies for a 20% tax abatement in a manner which complements Kansas state statute, which is actually a 100% abatement, and then a supplemental payment in lieu of taxes by the company that reflects the actual amount of the abatement approved. The city's bond counsel, Mary Carson, has been working with Providence Ethical Investments LLC on this matter, and has prepared the resolution for the governing body's consideration and approval. If approved, a payment in lieu of taxes agreement and bond ordinance would come back before the city commission at a future meeting. So, your alternatives are to approve the resolution, or not approve the resolution as presented, or provide staff another alternative. Staff recommends alternative one, to approve the resolution. There is no cost to the city for this action. The city has no responsibility for repayment of any obligations under an industrial revenue bond. So, I believe that we may have representatives from Providence Ethical Investment. We also, if you have questions about the tax abatement policy, any county economic development corporations present can talk to you about that, or staff will try to answer anything in between.
All right, do we have anybody who wants to speak from the public, or from the project?
My name is Dawn Williams, and I'm with Providence Ethical Investments, which is the holding company for the building which will house Garden City optometrist. Our office has been providing care for Garden City since 1916, so we have a long history. Our current building we're in was built in 1980, and we've done absolutely everything we can to make it work. And as you know, there are certain things that just technology will not allow in a building that was that old. So, by building this new building, we're able to offer more handicap accessibility for our patients, more efficient and effective care, basically. So, and we appreciate you being willing to consider this. It does help us provide better for the patients. Any questions?
It's a beautiful facility, really.
Thank you.
Looks great.
Thank you. Any other questions from, or comments from the public? All right, I will close the public hearing. All right.
I move to approve resolution number 2992-2022.
Second.
All right, there's a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That passes. Thank you.
Thanks, Dawn.
Wait a second for Commissioner Ortiz to get back.
Item 12B, the governing body is asked to consider and approve the purchase of a prefabricated restroom facility from LB Foster for $83,230 to be installed in Rotary Park. Aaron.
Afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. The governing body identified a goal this year to add restrooms along trail facilities. In doing the research for that, it was determined that we wanted to go with a prefabricated style for architectural consistency. So, when we actually released this proposal, we sought out more than just the restroom that we're talking about today. So, as you read through the proposals, you'll see several facilities, and that was done intentionally for, in the future, to be able to have those facilities, as well as a budgeting piece. What we have funds for today is a single style restroom that we have identified to put in Rotary Park, which is kind of a central location for Tally Trail. It all, it not only serves the park well, but it serves the trail in that capacity. So, the RFP was issued on October 3rd. Staff only received three proposals by the date of November 1st. LB Foster, Public Restroom Company, and Green Flesh Restrooms all submitted proposals. The table shows kind of the proposal base price with the options. So, we did compare like options, if they presented that as an opportunity. As you can see, Public Restroom Company, their PS011 is just a flat $150,000 rate. The lowest price in there with the submitted options that we approved is the LB Foster CXT Ozark 1, which is a single stall restroom for $83,230. In the 2021 transfers to capital improvement reserve, there was $69,000 from a parks budget for a dump truck. If you guys remember, we brought this in front of you twice and failed to get a truck twice. Talking with Fleet, we're not gonna get a truck anytime soon, so we're at the earliest, we're probably looking at 2024. So, the idea is to use those funds, as well as some of the leftover portion from the Clint Lightner project that is in that fund, to be utilized to purchase this. There is a remaining balance that would be covered under the $25,000 Special Recreation Parks Fund that's budgeted for park improvements, so that would cover the other cost here. Just a fiscal note here, we are including in the overall down there, not in the price before you today, but we do anticipate $20,000 for site preparation to put the roughends in the foundation and tie into sewer and water. So, just be aware of that as part of this, and we will, we will pay that out of that fund as well. So, the alternatives before you today is the governing body may approve the purchase of the CXT Ozark 1 restroom for $83,230 from LB Foster to be installed in Rotary Park. The governing body could select another restroom model for the installation in Rotary Park, or you may deny the purchase of the restroom and direct staff to another alternative. Staff recommends alternative one, approve the purchase of the CXT Ozark 1 for $83,230 from LB Foster, and I'll happily answer any questions.
What would be the planned seasonality of that restroom? Would it be a year round, or would it be?
Yeah, so, one of the, one of the, I should, sorry, two of the options that we chose, one was a heater, the other was insulation.
Okay.
So, it would be, it would be able to be serviced year round.
Good.
So, that's the selected options? That's what I was gonna ask?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I looked at the proposal first, and I saw all these really cool facilities, and then when I, oh, I said, oh, no, that's not the restroom. And then the restroom, I was like, wow, that's.
Yeah.
$82,000 doesn't buy much, but, I mean, it's gonna last, and so I think that's what's, and I think it's an ideal location. I think it's a very smart move.
All right. Take a motion.
I move to approve the purchase of a prefabricated restroom facility from LB Foster for $83,230 to be installed in Rotary Park.
Second.
All right, there's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That passes. Thanks, Aaron.
Item C, the governing body is asked to consider and approve the proposal from A1 Stop Print Shop for apparel services. Aaron.
So, about every four years, we go through this, assuming that pricing stays in line. So, there was a request for proposal that was issued on September 9th, asking for interested vendors to provide pricing for screen printing and embroidery services to supply apparel for staff and programs based on the historical orders by Parks and Recreation Department. We do that to develop a baseline to try to compare companies equally, because they all have different price breaks, and they, so, this is our attempt to try to level that playing field and do a good bid analysis. We did receive three admissions from vendors by the closing date of October 10th. One Stop Print Shop, Express Press, RT Supply, all submitted proposal. One Stop Print Shop submitted the most complete proposal, so, if you look through the proposal items, they will leave off certain items. Sometimes that's because it's discontinued. Sometimes there's, you know, especially in this market, they just cannot get it. So, they did submit the most complete, and they were still also the cheapest. Their production time fits within our window, which is approximately two weeks. And their, their price for their proposal was $69,843 compared to Express Press, which was the next closest, at 75,452, and that was without the same amount of items, so bear that in mind. If this proposal is approved, a contract associated with the proposal will be presented to the governing body at a future meeting. We do an initial year, and then three annual renewals in that initial contract. Assuming it doesn't escalate over 5% and increase costs, we would, we would anticipate renewing. If it increased past that 5%, that, we make that a trigger to go back out for proposals. So, the governing body may approve the proposal from One Stop Print Shop. The governing body, governing body may approve a proposal submitted from a different vendor, or the governing body may deny all proposals and provide additional recommendation, additional direction from staff, to staff. Staff recommends alternative one, approving the proposal from One Stop Print Shop. So, the financials here, again, these are estimates based on historical orders. Even though that looks lower, generally, we're budgeting across the Parks and Rec Departments about $120,000 each year. The bulk of that is coming through the athletic division, which is sports uniforms, and that's about $80,000. And I'll happily answer any questions.
I'll make a motion, we approve the proposed, proposal from A1, A1 Stop Print Shop.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That passes.
And item 12D, the governing body is asked to consider and approve the public art submission from Luis Valeta for the Southeast Park Fitness Court mural.
Yeah, so, at the August 16th commission meeting, the governing body was presented with an RFP to solicit artists and create a mural that's gonna be installed on the fitness court that goes in Southeast Park. Staff received 10 submissions from eight artists prior to the RFP closing on September 30th. October 6th, the selection committee met to review the submissions and ensure compliance with National Fitness Campaign's art standards, and make recommendations to the governing body. The committee consisted of the following people, David Euler, City Commissioner, Marilyn Porter, Parks and Rec Advisory Board Member, Katie Guthrie, Garden City Arts, myself, Jessica Wyankoff, Finance Coordinator, and Anita Garcia, Operations Coordinator for Parks and Rec. Luis Valeta's sunset-inspired art was selected as the primary recommendation. However, after that selection, it was identified that there are some edits that needed to be done, and so, he was asked to edit that and then resubmit it, which passed the committee's approval, and was then sent on to National Fitness Campaign to get their approval, because they did have to sign off on anything that was gonna go on the fitness court. So, the rankings below, where is Luis Valeta's Sunset mural, Teresa Wassinger submitted two. Her Garden City mural was ranked second, her life mural was ranked third, and then we had an alternate from Seraphino Ramirez in the Tiger Salamander mural. So, the governing body may approve Luis Valeta's Sunset Memorial for installation on Southeast Parks Fitness Court. The governing body may select another artist to be installed on Southeast Parks Fitness Court, or the governing body may deny all submissions and direct staff to a different alternative. The selection committee and staff recommend alternative one, approving Luis Valeta's Sunset mural for installation on Southeast Parks Fitness Court. And just a fiscal note, there's a $5,000 grant award for the mural that was selected. That will be funded out of National Fitness Campaign's art program, so that doesn't reflect on the city's finances. We did agree to do $150 for, per the second place and third place submissions. Now, that happens to be the same artist, so Teresa Wassinger will receive the $300 for the two submissions that she made. And I'll happily answer any questions.
Well, I wanted to say thank you for including all the submissions. That was really, that was, that was really fun to look through all of those. And so, the only question I had was that on, when, so I, so from what my understanding was, is that Luis Valeta's was already selected, and then the edits were required to fit National Fitness Court's art standards? Is that what you were saying?
No, it was suggested that, so, that piece of work was selected as the favorite.
Okay.
First and foremost. The discussion that ensued after that was to bring more focus to, away from what was the centerpiece, the cactus and fire behind the cactus, and pull that, because we didn't feel like it represented garden very much, and draw more focus into the elements of garden, which is what you had as the final version.
Yeah, I just, I was asked a question, I just wanted to make sure and clarify that. So, he'd already been selected, and then that.
Correct.
Yeah, it's a really neat process. I thought it was really good, so. All, all of them were really good.
Very much so.
But these ones, like you said, I think the, the top four were really nice.
It was, it was a difficult choice, but.
It was.
Yeah, art would be hard.
Yeah.
Yeah. All right, take a motion.
Yeah, I move that we, the governing body approve Luis Valeta's Sunset mural for installation on the Southeast Park Fitness Court.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That passes. Thank you, Aaron.
Thank you, Aaron. I believe that concludes the business items for today's meeting, if I've kept track of all of that correctly.
Yep.
And we're ready for Commissioner comments.
All right, Commissioner Ortiz.
All right, so, just first and foremost, Town Hall meeting, November 29th, so, if you have anything you'd like to discuss, that's just kind of a time that you can come and express your feelings or concerns, or if there's an idea of yours that you may just want to present to the city commission here, that's a time, a great time to do that. It is in the evening, so, after work hours, sometimes it only lasts about two minutes, and sometimes it lasts an hour, but depending on who we get. So, please come to that if you have time, schedule in your, your focus on whatever you want to discuss, and then we can listen to those comments then. Also, I would like to say thanks to Dawn Williams, who was here, the new optometrist opening up. I think they've probably got a lot of comments on where they're located at now, and, and the service that they're gonna provide now, so, thanks to them for their commitment here in Garden City as well, and, and like, like them, I hope there's more to come with professionals that are interested in Garden City to open up here and just continue to grow Garden City. So, lastly, I think you got Thanksgiving coming up. I know we won't meet before then again, so, just like to say happy Thanksgiving to everyone, and spend time with family, friends, loved ones, make a phone call to an old friend if you haven't for a while. I know this is also a time for people to express loneliness and sadness too, so, reach out, keep in touch. Don't forget about your pets either, they're, you know, they like to eat scraps under the table, but be careful what you feed them. So, with that, I'd just like to say happy Thanksgiving.
Right. Commissioner Euler.
Thanks, Matt, for the pre-meeting. It was nice to go over the legislative agenda for both state and federal. It's always good to kind of talk about that and, and really focus in on the things that are important. I wanted to thank all of the crews who kept the streets clean, and also the runways at the airport. I know that that's long and daunting, and, you know, a lot of times you're wondering, well, when is it gonna snow, and how long, and, and, I mean, so, thank you for everyone who kind of went above and beyond for that. I also wanted to thank Derek for all of his work for the Hero in You kickoff dinner. That was, it was just a great dinner, but then also to all of the city staff, to Matt for emceeing the event, and for all of the staff who were there, helping to set up and take down, and who attended. It was just a remarkable evening, and it was one where, last week, I was out at Tyson for work, and I had a lot of comments from some of the employees who were there, and they just felt like they were heard, they felt like it was important for them to be there, they were grateful to be there, and a lot of, then it led to some other conversations that we had with some of the other employees. with some of the other employees who live in those apartments now but didn't back in 2016 and didn't know about it. And it was a real eye-opener. And so we had a lot of conversations last week about that, but then also what the Heroine U is, what the fund means. And so it was just a really great opportunity. So thank you guys for everything that you did, but then also for all who came out that day. That's all I have.
Commissioner Ranner.
I also want to say thank you for the, just reviewing the legislative agenda. I know it's a long view and it seems like it's, it's extremely slow process, but I really appreciate that everything that's on those legislative, both the federal and the state are important, not only to us as a city, but also us as a state. So thanks for really taking that time. I thought it was interesting, Commissioner Ortiz talked about Thanksgiving and you know, match day follows Thanksgiving. And so there are so many nonprofits in our community that do such incredible work. And match day is a way to not only reward them, also hopefully spend additional dollars, but it's also just a way to say thanks to all the people who are doing really great work behind the scenes in our city. So I would just encourage you, I like the online, in case you can't be there on the 29th. And so this is like the voting day, you vote early. So if you can't be there on the 29th, the online option, it's very quick. And it's really, it's really, it really works well. I also just was, I was reading through the Friends of the Richardson Zoo report. I could not believe how much money they made at Booth's Zoo and a Wild Affair. That is incredible. I mean, it was almost $60,000, $68,000. So congratulations to them. I didn't, I had no idea that those events gross that much money. I've had kids for a long time that we go to the Booth's Zoo, so. I also just wanted to say congratulations, the Fitness Court. I wasn't there for the day, it was too cold, but I did go and view the Fitness Court at the Garden City Community College. That is, man, that's a neat, it's gonna be, it's gonna be a lot of fun. I hope it's really well-used and I hope a lot of people, and you can actually bike there because of our trail system. I did get to attend the Veterans Day Firework, which, you know, I just, I just wanted to say thank you. I know Veterans Day comes and goes really quickly, but I do want to say thank you to all the veterans who have paid so much that we can have so much. And you know, they gave so that we can have. And so we have an incredible nation and I just wanted to say thank you. And Veterans Day, even though it's one day a year, I'll tell you, it's really an honor just to do it every day of the year. And then finally, I just wanted to say thank you. You know, when the first snow of the year, you always wonder what's gonna happen and I was out early and I heard the, the first responders, you know, automatically the sirens are going. And so, you know, I just wanted to say thank you, the first responders, the police officers and the firefighters and the EMS and everyone who has to be out there working in the cold. And I, I thought about the water department who has, I cannot imagine doing water when it's that cold. But I just wanted to say thank you to all of those who are really keeping us not only safe, but also who are braving the elements so that we also have all of our public utilities and safety in our community. But that, that's it.
Commissioner Sussler.
This week is American Education Week and the mayor was at the high school this morning. He was supposed to be there yesterday morning, but with the weather and everything, we, we kind of shifted everything, but did a great job at promoting this week as American Education Week. So thank an educator this week if you can or if you see him. It's a, it's a daunting task, but we're educating our leaders for the future. And really, the other commissioners have talked about it, but I did notice, it was great. I was, I was watching our crews clear the streets and one of the trucks drove by and it actually had the snowplow that the high school painted for the Touch a Truck program. And I was like, hey, that is awesome. It was this painted snowplow. So we use artwork in our community in more ways than one. You know, we approve it, but we also use it on our streets and everything. So I thought that was, that was pretty neat. So that's all I've got.
Alright, I'll touch on match day. We've already talked about it a lot on November 29th, but it is a very important day for a lot of our nonprofits. The money that's raised and the money that's matching does go, stays locally. And that's not always the case when we do donations, some of the times that leaves, but this, this all stays locally. And where the funds raised during this time, sometimes there's a difference between being able to do an additional program or not. So if you do have the ability to give on the 29th to some of our local nonprofits, please consider that. I will point out that, or highlight that the bathroom on Rotary Park is one of those topics that really came through the CIP process and it really is a testament to the, that whole idea that the community can get involved and say, what are some capital projects that are important to them? Because they, they kept that project on the top part of everybody's mind. So it's good to see that that's finally getting underway. Kind of got bumped around a little bit because of COVID, but it's good to see that that is getting done because that is, that is something that the citizens who did go through that process really kept on highlighting as something that they'd like to see. So like to point that out and I'm looking forward to getting back to that sort of community involvement with our, with our commission here pretty soon. Was able to do a, one of the final reviews for the recreation comp plan. It is, when we say comprehensive plan, it is very comprehensive. It's hundreds of pages and talking about the status of all the parks and improvements and stuff like that. So that's gonna be something that's gonna be good for our community going forward and looking at kind of how we plan out our recreation for at least a decade, if not more. So that was, that's a good process that we're about to wrap up here pretty soon. Was able to go to Banner Art Auction that was held at Flat Mountain Brew House this year with Garden City Arts. I did get a banner, but I forgot to bring it to us to see what it is. But so, it really well attended, some tremendous artists in the area. I mean, we saw it with the art submitted for the, the rec thing there, but we have some really good artists in the community and that's a good event to help support downtown Garden City. And then finally, like Commissioner Ortiz says, it's Thanksgiving. Good time for us to get together with our families. Make sure you reach out to those people that you're thankful for, not just friends and family, but everybody who makes your life worthwhile and, and better. And then like he said, please keep in mind that this is a time where people do tend to get more lonely. So take the extra time to reach out if you can. And with that, well done. Thank you.